Call this meeting to order. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending. Will the clerk please take the attendance?
All council members present, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda. Clerk, please take your role.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Spiker.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye. Okay. Next item is open forum. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Our first presentation, it's an update on the First Impressions Secret Shopper Program. Emily Koon and Kelly Cold, both from the SDSU Extension, Community Vitality Program, will present the site.
Super. Thank you. We have a handout for you so you can kind of follow along, so we'll pass that out to those in the audience and then you as well. All right. Then, not being familiar with how things go in here, I'm used to presenting and standing, but Emily, you want to knock? Take us off?
Um, good. All right. Beautiful. So, we are here tonight to report on an update for the First Impressions Program. So, to kick things off, we like to just start with outlining the process of First Impressions to get you all kind of familiar with what the First Impressions Program looks like. So, to begin with, a community, in this case, your sales Brookings, requests first impressions. A second community of similar size and proximity is then chosen to be the partner community. In this case, it was Aberdeen and South Dakota. Both communities complete an application and acquire relevant signatures. The next step, we gather volunteer visitors, or the communities gather volunteer visitors to participate in the program. And so, Extension, we then train these visitors in an orientation to prepare for their trip to their partner community. From there on out, visitors will make their trips over an agreed-upon timeframe. In this case, it was over the course of the summer, about a month and a half from July through August. So, they record their impressions of their partner community, take notes of these, bring them back to us. The next step, we had Extension then compile the reports. And then, we present out the key findings of those reports. So, everything that the visitors collected during their trips, we're here to kind of give you the key highlights. And then, after that, the final step is communities will then use these results for further action planning and discussion. So, that is the whole. So, why First Impressions? This is a feedback-based assessment. So, what it's really trying to answer is how does a visitor view my town? It's an attempt to evaluate successes and strengths that a town has, as well as setting goals and priorities for kind of next steps. You know, what are some opportunities that we can have to improve upon our town? Now, going through some of these, we won't go into extreme depth, but of course, if there's any questions you have on any point of the visitor's comments, feel free to ask us. We'll have time for that at the end. But if you don't agree with any of the observations here today, be really curious and inquisitive. You know, why does the visitor see their impressions in this way? Also consider, you know, is this observation worth considering? If they say something way out there, is that an observation we need to be considering, or was that somebody just having a grumpy day? And then furthermore, you know, what can we do if there is a place to improve, an opportunity to kind of make some positive change? What can we do to kind of overcome these obstacles or overcome some of the less positive perceptions?
Great, super. So, a little bit of a background. So, with Extension, we do a lot of asset-based community development. And why this is important is we are trying to focus on the positives. We're looking at the opportunities and trying to carry that conversation from there. Once you start thinking about the problems in a community and really start dwelling on them, that's where that conversation is leading. And we would like to see those conversations lead to opportunities and create that momentum forward for those conversations. So, the, this is, like I said, a core principle, a core tenet of what we do within Community Vitality. And by doing this and having this program, we are just trying to accelerate those conversations and help with community growth. One other thing that I would like to visit about quickly here is this gentleman right here, he's a senior research fellow with the U of M, University of Minnesota. And he has done a lot of research on what is bringing people back into the community. And it's not necessarily, you know, we're taught that, you know, the young people of our communities are leaving, but they truly aren't. We're starting to see this brain gain in rural communities. And what does that mean for communities of Brookings size, or the communities of Volga size, or anything in between? Whether Sioux Falls and Rapid City would like to admit it, they are rural. They just don't want to admit it, I don't think. But anyway, so we are a rural state, and there has been an influx in our state, and why is that? So, not only did he do some research, but you can see that a job is not one of the top 10 reasons that people move into these rural communities. It's the safety, it's the simplicity, the better life that they can afford to have, the better housing, you know, the more affordable housing. So, those are some things to keep in mind when you're thinking about, you know, what's going to attract people to my community? Okay? So, yes, jobs are important, people have to have work to live, but there's a lot of remote workers and things like that to be considering. And then also, when you think about those people coming into your community, everybody's like, oh, small town, small town, everybody knows everybody in a small town. Well, they really don't. So, he's really encouraging everybody to reach out to those people, introduce yourself, you know, really get to know them. Because when people come into a small community, sometimes it doesn't stick because they feel like an outsider. And sometimes, we are our own worst enemy. So, being able to reach out to those people and make them feel like they're part of the community is going to be very important. And then, just a little bit of a teaser here. So, we had Ben Winchester as our guest on one of our webinars, you can find that on our website. But we did our own survey for why people come to South Dakota. And we are in the process of getting, while we're really excited, we're so close to getting that published. And when it does get published, you'll see it first on our website, so be looking for it there. But that's going to help people realize, you know, these are some things that we can do, this is the perceptions people have coming into our state. So, that's a broader view, and this is more of a micro view, obviously, for Brookings itself. So, Emily?
So, now we're going to get into kind of the meat and potatoes of the report itself. So, first off, we just have some overall report content, stuff that really hasn't been dived into within this particular report, but we wanted to cover anyways. So, overall report data, the report itself is about 24 pages long compiled. In order to get all this information together, it took about 412 hours between volunteers and staffs, volunteers making their visits, staff compiling the reports. And when the visitors made their trips here, they spent between $45 and $788 either during their day trips or overnight stay when they visited. On average, it was about $358.76. And the total impact of that was $3,587.58. Excuse me. As for ROI, it's hard to calculate because this is a pilot program that was offered free of charge, so calculating that is a little bit difficult, but we wanted to provide some of those other statistics to kind of just give an overall idea of what some of that data looked like. As for the report itself, it delves into a variety of categories, which I've listed up here, I won't read them all off for you, but some of them we'll cover today include some of the pre-visit web search, five-minute impression, and then we kind of condensed the remainder of the areas into kind of like the key highlights. What did people most like? What were some of the challenges that they noted from these areas in particular? So, getting into the first part, we have the pre-visit web presence. So, the very first thing we have the visitors do before they even make their trips is conduct a web search. So, see what they can find on Google, on Yahoo, on social media. What does the town look like just from a web perspective? And so, what the visitors found is they really thought there was a strong online presence through very well-linked city, visit Brookings and Chamber websites, all of which really had a very cohesive brand voice and very consistent updates. They really liked how frequently these updates happened and how up-to-date the information was. So, additionally, there was really comprehensive information available on multiple different areas, so events, parks, maps, civic meetings. And so, they were really impressed by the amount of information available. They were also impressed by the friendly website, user-friendly website designs.
Emily, can I ask a question?
Hmm?
How many visitors are you, how many participants were there?
So, for Brookings, there was 10 visitors who were signed up as visitors, but many of them came with a spouse or a friend, so that number was a little bit higher than that, but.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yes.
So, eighteen, and these were Aberdeen-based folks?
Correct.
Who were in person.
Yeah. And had those individuals ever been to Brookings before, or do you find people who have, like, never visited the community? A mix of both. So, there were some that had attended Brookings before, some that this is their first time ever, so. But we tried to pick, oh yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, and I think between our program leads and the ones in Aberdeen, they kind of decided that they would like, you know, maybe a realtor and some specific type of, you know, family, older people, retirees, whatever. So, they, when we look for visitors, I think that's kind of something they kept in mind.
Yes, trying to get as wide of a perspective as we possibly can. So, exactly like what Kelly said, we try to get people who are more family-oriented, somebody who's, we had, I think, university students from each group, since both Brookings and Aberdeen are university towns. We had realtors. And so, we're trying to get as broad of perspectives as possible. Somebody who's a student might have a very different perspective on a town than somebody who has, you know, a family of four kids. So, they're looking for different things, they enjoy different things, and so, trying to get that broad, broad perspective. There, they also noted, there was really good event promotion across multiple calendars and social media pages. One challenge that they did find was some visitors struggled to find some parking details, but they ultimately noted, which we may see later in the presentation, that parking was abundant. And so, even though the details weren't as prolific online, people really didn't have an issue finding parking, so. A few also felt promotion was more geared towards family-oriented content versus local business or college-town offerings. So, that's something also to consider, is maybe focusing more on some local businesses or college-town offerings. And yeah, all right, so, five-minute impression. So, this step, the next question after the online visit, is when visitors come in, we ask them to just drive through town, don't even get out yet, just take a drive, five minutes, what are your impressions? So, the immediate impressions right when they get to town. And so, what they noticed from this, very clean, a well-kept community with abundant flowers, greenery, eye-catching landscaping. This was something that was noted across the report. Visitors were very, very happy with the amount of flowers, although they thought it was really beautiful. Landscaping was mentioned across multiple different categories, and so they were very, very impressed with that. They also thought there was really charming historic neighborhoods with visible home improvements showing reinvestment into the community and just a general care and upkeep. The downtown area is very central and easily navigable, people were very complimentary towards the downtown area, though they did mention some buildings and sidewalks show a little bit of wear and tear. Some entrances offer mostly positive impressions, especially via Pioneer Park, though some commercial areas and signage could be updated, was a comment that they also had. They also noted intentional land use and visible construction, which was actually viewed favorably. They thought the construction showed a lot of reinvestment into the community and making sure that things were off-cap. So, yeah, showing that ongoing growth. All right.
Great, super. All right, so, key themes, again, this is just a base overview. So, there was probably four or five different areas where, five, six, key positive areas, obviously welcoming and friendly, that kept showing up over and over again. Business owners, residents, people on the street were seen as kind and helpful, approachable, genuinely welcoming. And, you know, the minute I walked into this room, I had people helping me get up here. So, it is definitely a culture thing here, I love it. Strong sense of community, again, that family-friendly oriented community, people are actively participating in the community, they're actually out and doing things in the community, and our visitors recognize that. Local events, farmer's market, yogurt in the park were some of the things where people were actually seen out enjoying those community events. The town was seen as safe and comfortable with a neighborly feel, so that's a really good overall impression as well. Downtown and local businesses, again, it just kept coming up and coming up and coming up. You guys have a beautiful community, and it is well landscaped, and the flowers, I don't know who does it, but it's amazing, pat them on the back, I love it too. So, again, frequently mentioned as a highlight, the beautiful landscapes. And it's vibrant, it's walkable, again, bikeable, so kudos, again, the flower displays, boutiques. The visitors really appreciated seeing all of that, also having the mix of retail and the coffee shops, the antique stores, even though some of them were not open when our visitors came, they would come back just to be able to partake and go into those stores. And despite ongoing construction, downtown was, again, easy to navigate, so it was very nice and welcoming. Other key themes, cleanliness kept on coming up again. At the end, you'll see that that was one of those words to describe the community, very, very strong impression when it comes to cleanliness. Lots of great infrastructure, curb appeal, things like that. Landscaping and green spaces, again, I cannot reiterate that enough, that just, that's a theme that just kept coming up and coming up and coming up. Very visually appealing from the moment you drive in. The attractions, the parks, again, you have a number of parks throughout the community. I mean, I'm looking out this window and it's beautiful, you got the courthouse here. I mean, every time I turn around, there's something really nice to look at, so. The children's museum, the community parks, outdoor events were seen as major assets for Brookings, for both families and visitors alike, so that's something to keep in mind. Again, navigation is really easy to get around, good infrastructure, parking was easy. Now, granted, most of those places that people were parking in front of was during the summer, you know, not during school season. I don't know if there's a lot of change with that when the college kids come back in, but at the time of the visits, parking was not an issue. So, frequently mentioned positives, again, these were the things that kept coming up. The friendly, safe, family-oriented community, vibrant, attractive downtown, clean, well-maintained city, cityscapes, streetscapes, abundance of parks and trails and outdoor activities. There's a lot, a lot of things for people to do when they come to Brookings if they want to be outside. Strong community engagement, events, there was, you know, the city was getting ready for an event when I was here the last time, they had little signs on the street, so I know for sure that there's just, you know, you guys rally around those events. It's a very welcoming and inclusive atmosphere. They gave you that great curb appeal across businesses, you know, residential, you name it. Active local economy, quality businesses, thriving downtown, and then you have that strong university and community connection. So, you have that, you know, the university isn't just, you know, over there, there's a lot of interaction between the town and the university.
So, now we're going to move here to some challenges and/or opportunities, as we like to phrase them. So, one thing that came up was housing availability and affordability. So, some of the visitors noted, one task we had them do was take, you know, drive through, see if there's any for sale signs on housing, you know, take a peek in your online search, what if they're available? So, something that they found is a more limited housing supply, so a little bit more barriers for entry level or affordable homes. Older homes in historic areas may need reinvestment or updates, but that was also something that they noticed earlier on in the presentation, if you remember, that they noticed there was reinvestment being put into those, being put into those homes. So, that was also mentioned as a positive, so take that one for granted. Newer developments may be priced out of reach for some, especially some of those college students graduating from like SDSU and wanting to kind of move back into the community. Rental prices and limited availability could deter long-term settlement, so that was something that they noticed was about housing availability. Public transportation, and this was mainly outside of downtown. Downtown was frequently described as very walkable and very easy to get around, but outside of downtown, they noticed a lack of public transportation or noticeable public transportation was a barrier for some. They described it as very car-dependent, as well as kind of a lack of walkability in some of the areas outside of downtown, with some sidewalks that are aging or needing improvement. Then we get into economic and cultural opportunities. So, one comment that was mentioned was more youth-oriented culture. And by youth, it was very much phrased as like late teens through like late twenties. And it was specifically opportunities outside of like the collegiate sphere, because I think that's something that was noted as being very good, is the pride of the jacks and collaboration with SDSU, but more youth appeal outside of the collegiate sphere. So, encouraging things like grassroots arts and cultural programming to kind of retain and attract some of those younger visitors. Yeah, go ahead.
So, when you say that encouraging grassroots arts and cultural programming, are you thinking maybe like a jazz festival or something like that?
Yeah, I think that's what they were thinking. At least that's what I got into from the report and from their notes. Just more things to draw in kind of that late teen to late twenties range. Something that they mentioned, and I know I'm kind of jumping back into some of the positives, is there was a lot of really good family-oriented things, there was lots of really positive comments on things like the children's museum. And so, they were just looking for more things for kind of that middle range between family and kids, so. But yes, then into growth and planning, there's visible signs of expansion in industrial residential areas, so it's kind of a challenge of managing growth while maintaining community character. And something they also mentioned as a positive was there is a really good division between like residential areas and industrial areas, so keeping, maintaining that, maintaining the attraction of, yes, and that sort of thing. But then balancing new development with preservation of small-town charm is another thing to just consider as well. And then we get into kind of the things that popped up most often between all of the visitors' reports. So, we already kind of touched on housing shortages, particularly affordable and entry level, looking at options for public transportation or visible public transportation, or even some pedestrian infrastructure outside of the downtown area. Focus on strong community identity to keep proximity to Sioux Falls. There was one participant that mentioned, when they went into a store downtown, they had asked one of the customer service reps there, you know, hey, what's there to do around town, you know, we're here for the day, what's there to do? And they're like, well, you know, you can hop on the interstate and go down to Sioux Falls. So, we want to make sure that we're retaining visitors and that we're promoting the things that we have here in Brookings over just bumping on down to Sioux Falls, so. Some other things they mentioned was just some older infrastructure and neighborhood upkeep, as well as maintaining and balancing, you know, the small-town character while being a very growing community. And so, keeping the balance of the small-town charm with the growth. Yes? It feels like.
This one is, is it water tower one of the challenges?
Yes, one of the comments, one of the comments mentioned the tower just in need of some upkeep, like maybe painting it and making it look a little, a little bit more eye-appealing.
It's getting torn down.
Just so you know it's coming down.
It's getting torn down as well.
Boy, what you guys want, you're on top of it.
Well, we heard what they were saying. We just need to find our home with the buzzards.
Yeah. We have those in Aberdeen too.
Yeah.
All right, so, most remembered. So, what are the things, at the very end, we ask visitors, you know, what are you going to most remember? What are some things that are going to bring you back to this community that would encourage you? Yeah, I'm like, I'd like to come back and spend another day, another day or two, or even to move to this community. So, some things that they really enjoyed were museums and galleries. McCory Gardens was mentioned very positively, as well as the Dakota Nature Park. The children's museum was mentioned multiple times. Downtown and the variety of stores and businesses downtown was really positively mentioned as well. People loved downtown, they spent a lot of time there. I don't think there was a visitor that didn't stop downtown, so that was very positively mentioned. The outdoor areas of flowers, landscaping, I know we've touched on this already, but people loved the flowers and the landscaping. There was great opportunities for young children, especially with the children's museum. Farmer's market, many people stopped at the farmer's market over the summer and they really, really loved it. That was positively mentioned multiple times. Things like downtown concerts, as well as shopping, dining experiences, friendly business owners, people really thought that folks were very friendly and very welcoming and very helpful. And so, yeah, I kind of already walked into the second, the next point there. The energy of downtown was also positively mentioned, people really loved downtown. And then the family-oriented attractions as well were seen very favorably.
All right, so we're wrapping up here. So, we had asked our visitors if they could describe the community in three adjectives, what would they be? And so, this is what we came up with. Obviously, people can't count very well because we have somebody that, you know, only provided two, and other people like, hey, if we hyphenate, we can add more. So, again, that welcoming and that clean just kept on rising to the top, just if there's one, two, three, three welcoming's, and I think there's probably three cleans just in that list right there. So, between clean, friendly, welcoming, that kid-friendly, that college-town, that kind of goes into that jack pride, you can see that when you are out and about, again, as far as the work that you guys have done to reinvest in the community, that's coming up with that invested, emerging, vibrant, so very, very well-received. I think we had to work pretty hard to get some opportunities to list, but very, very impressive. So, what's next? So, what are the next steps? So, you know, we originally thought we had a little bit more time and we had a little bit longer of a presentation that delved into the report a little bit more, and we would be willing, if you guys wanted us back, to go in and have that longer report out if you so desire. If not, that's fine too. So, that would be possibly a next step. But we would really encourage you all to keep this conversation going, to keep these discussions going, and to have a planning session, even amongst yourselves on what to do. What should we do next? What can we glean from this and what can we do? And set some priorities, goals, maybe, you know, a specific strategic planning session. I don't know what that is for you guys in Brookings, but we really want you to keep this conversation going. We will check back, we'll circle back around, and I don't know if that's to you, Sam, or to you two ladies, whatever you guys choose, but we will circle back around and see if there's anything that we can do to help out. You know, we have programs like Marketing Hometown America, Strategic Planning, a lot of different things that could probably help with next steps if you guys are so interested. But general recommendations is to have each and every one of you think about ways that you can help send this positive message. Because remember, these potential new residents, they're researching online before they even come to town, and when they are in town, you know, they're looking, you know, can I make this my community? Can I, you know, can I fit here? Is this something that I can see myself living here for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years? So, when, and I know that you guys have a training, right, for your customer service, and I actually ran- And I actually ran into that a couple of times, where they got their certificate, so well done. They did, they did awesome. But also, you know, your residents, you know, how can your residents, you know, Joe Blow on the street, you know, what can they say to help tell that positive story about, about Brookings instead of sending them down to Sioux Falls? And if I had to guess, that was probably a college person that...
They mentioned in the report it was a young person.
A young person, yeah. But anyway, you know, have everybody tell that story. And use that city and school website, because if people are looking at coming into your community, that's probably where they're going to hit first, rather than, you know, Visit Brookings. They'll probably hit that as well, but they'll probably hit the school and the, the public utilities and things like that first. So use that to your best ability in addition to the tourism and chamber websites.
So I actually looked over your original presentation, which is quite a bit more detailed than this one.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if that's not something we could put on the city website as... I mean, I think it's, it's a good report, it's essentially the slideshow, but...
It's on the packet, in the packet, is that what you're asking?
The one that, like the eighty-some slides?
Yeah.
That's in the packet, it's available to the public.
No, but I mean as a link of the actual survey, you know, what that, this was done, more up on a dashboard rather than inside of a study session, so...
I'm sure we can make a post with a link to it.
So that's an excellent point. This is being, this is our pilot, this is our beta test, right? We base this off of K-State. And if you go visit K-State's website, first impressions, they have at least 130, if not more. They said they've been doing this and they have 150 under their belt right now. But they actually post the presentations and the report if the, if the community's approved it. And you guys did. We're not quite to that point yet where we're going to put it on our website, because this is just our, our first one out of the gate. But hopefully, at some point, we would post it on ours as well. But you're more than welcome to put it wherever you would like, because this is now... We have officially handed it, handed the research back to you guys, and you can run with it however you see fit. But that is a really great point. Thank you for reminding me about that piece, too.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah. Any other questions?
First, I just want to thank you for this work and for, for putting together a report and for just running this program. I think it's really interesting to kind of see what the feedback from folks from outside of our community would be. And clearly, there are a lot of things that were positively highlighted here, and I want to give a lot of credit to the people that are sitting in this room, because it is the hard work that all of you guys do that make our community so beautiful and vibrant and, and easy to navigate both online and in person, so thank you for that. When it comes to the general recommendations, what I would love to see is these folks who are leading these efforts kind of come together and maybe work with you on that more extensive workshop that you had mentioned, to, to set some of those goals, because I think whether it's the folks from our staff, you know, through Parks, or Sam and the work that she does, or if it's through Visit Brookings and Downtown and the other community partners, they're going to be the ones that are definitely going to know what those best goals are to set. And then if you're willing to do that and you set those goals and then bring those back to us, I think that might be a really great way to continue the momentum on, on what's happening here. Because, I mean, we can certainly give some ideas, but you guys are the experts and you guys are the ones that are already doing this stellar work. So I, I would defer to your, your expertise. I don't know if other counselors have thoughts, but...
Oh, no, I'll agree with that. I have something completely different. No, I think that's great. I, I would defer to the experts, too. I just had two questions. On one, for the online presence, did you encourage them to just stick to the official websites? Or did you have them look at like social media or have them kind of see what other online presence there is just organically and get information from that?
Yeah, we had them look at everything. So when we, when we trained them, it was do a general web search, do Google, do social media, do Yahoo, whatever you prefer. However, you would normally research a destination that you are planning to go to for a trip. Or if you're, and we also encouraged them to look at, if you are going to be a new resident, look at it through that lens, too. And so it was a general, general search that included things like social media, the official city websites. I think a lot of them deferred to the official like city website, chamber website and that sort of thing, just because it was probably something they're familiar with in their town and they knew that they could get information from there. But they were encouraged to look across a whole wide spectrum of media.
And then the other question is downtown was talked about a lot, which is great. We have invested quite a bit in that. I was wondering if you got a general sense of kind of like a hotspot map of where else they visited? We have other like shopping areas in town, and I'm just curious of what drew them to mainly downtown, but if they visited those other areas.
Yes, they did visit.
That'd be back to Bonnie's point with that longer presentation.
Yes, so in the longer presentation, we do delve into some of the other retail areas that they visited. It's less of a hotspot map and more of like, here's what I noticed, or I stopped at this store and it was great, or I stopped at this store.
Wouldn't it be good if there was a Target?
Yes, Target was mentioned.
We will get rid of the water tower. We will do both of those. And just a nod to you over there and your, your firefighter people. Very positive, both fire and police. So...
Yeah, I would say the three comments I always hear from new residents is that it's welcoming, it's, it's clean, and the quality of life is exceptional. It seems like this captured a lot of that.
So there was a comment, I'm, go ahead, Nick. I'll save my question, go ahead.
I had more of a comment than a question. I would echo the sentiments of appreciation. Maybe my comment comes more like as a South Dakotan than a Brookings city councilor. I'm really glad we could participate in the pilot, and I think that Brookings and Aberdeen were two really great communities to serve in this pilot exchange. I'm really curious, in other communities, how, how participatory they are and what, how they receive the reports. And I don't say that because I don't think we have a lot to learn. I think we do, and reports like this are helpful to us and guide the decisions we make. But I can see a report like this also being really useful in communities where they need a catalyst to get like their council to invest, they need their chamber to invest, right? And this report, to me, seems like it could be really powerful for folks that might be naysayers in your own community. So I hope there are other communities in the state, perhaps smaller communities, that will participate in this program, because I think if I were in some of those communities, I hear from friends that are trying to do great things in their towns, and they've got a lot of folks that are like, just don't get why it would be worthwhile to invest in the park or in the tennis courts or on Main Street. And a report like this, to me, feels like it could be really powerful in a mid-sized community in the state that just needs a little wind at their back. So I'm, I'm excited to see where this could go in our state. I think it could be really powerful.
And, and the biggest piece about that is that this is an unbiased report. So, you know, it's, the intention is that it's presented as such and that you can use it as such when you're talking to some of those naysayers or those people that haven't quite turned a corner yet, but...
That's not to say that we don't have that in Brookings and that we can't learn a lot from this, too, but I just think there are other communities that eventually this could be a great tool for.
Thank you.
So one of the questions I have, and maybe it's because we had people come from Aberdeen, and they said something about lack of public transportation. Does Aberdeen have a bus stop? So, I mean, I'm just asking the question, it's like, how could we enhance public transportation without having them have to call Beta to pick them up and get an appointment to have them picked up somewhere? We don't really have bus stops. And so I understand that part, walkability. Most of the time, we try to maintain our sidewalks best as possible, we take sections. And, and then I was looking at that, too. It's like, I know at pool time, the whole evening, there were quite a few Lyft cars and, and available. And so it, it was possible. That and we just got our multi-use sidewalks just made now in the last couple of months in the south end of town all along Antonia. Otherwise, it was a little difficult to navigate through there. So we've done some improvements, which I, I understand we can do more. But, and public transportation one kind of kicks me a little bit.
That's, that's been a difficult call issue up in Aberdeen for many years. And for the longest time, our taxi would not even allow the Ubers or the Lifts. So we finally turned the corner on that, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I think probably coming from Aberdeen, we're overly sensitive to it, maybe. And I, I don't know, I don't want to stick my, my own personal opinion in that, but that would be my guess, is that we notice that it's not up there and there, too, or not here.
Right.
And I wonder if some of it isn't just better telling the story that we do have those options, that we do have Lyft, that we do have taxi services, that we do have Beta as a, as a public transportation route. Maybe it's just not finding the information available, because we do have some options.
Is Beta the one that takes people to doctor's appointments in Sioux Falls?
Uh, they do.
Okay, because there was a mention of that.
Yeah, because I think it was really visibility. I think that was a lot of their comments. And I think because a lot of them came in their own vehicles, they would have had no way to encounter public transportation. And so even if that visibility is having like something posted to a website, a city website, being like, here's, you know, here's how you can schedule a lift or something like that, so that way it's visible. But I think it was more so a visibility issue than anything, as they were coming in their own vehicles. And so they just didn't cover it.
Okay, go ahead.
So one question that I have is more about this program moving forward. So you mentioned that K-State has this program and they've done it about 150 times. So what is their recommendation in terms of when would a community want to participate in this program again?
I don't know if, I, I don't know if you've ever encountered that, but I will.
I mean, I could make inferences about, well, of course, maybe once you, you know, implemented a lot of the recommendations, or maybe your community has undergone, you know, substantial growth in a particular area or something. But I just wondered more like what the professional maybe recommendation?
Like come back after we check on the water tower.
Well, and, you know, it's kind of funny, too. So we did provide all the pictures on Zip disk to... You can use those pictures as kind of a frame of reference as well. So even if you didn't have the, the official, you know, first impressions, second impressions, again, you can use those to, to do a comparative analysis of, you know, what it was like five years ago, you know.
Were the photographs taken by the, by the secret choppers?
Yes, yeah. So that's kind of fun, because then you can kind of see, you know, what they were looking at and what they thought was interesting and fun. Trust me, there was a lot of flower pictures.
Here, Paul, here's an interesting one here for public infrastructure, public safety. And this is a picture of the police station.
They love the police department.
Facilities appear modern, well-maintained, and separately located. Was that in Brookings?
Maybe it's a statue.
I was disappointed there wasn't any turkey burgers on that water tower.
They were all, they were all circling, they hadn't landed yet.
Any other questions for Emily or Kelly? Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much.
Very interesting, a lot to learn from.
Contact information if you guys need it. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paul, it's ready. Our next presentation, Discussion on Home Occupations. Mike Strup, our community development director, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to introduce you to our associate planner, Bailey Meka. My apologies, she's been with us since early May, but we thought this was an opportunity to introduce her to the council and then you get to put a face with some names that you're going to get to see and hear from here coming in the future. And one of her first tasks that we actually had her working on, even before Councilmember Duran brought it up about the home occupations, is we knew we had some things that we needed to look at changing. And so Bailey did a lot of research and put together some recommendations that we discussed internally as staff. So with that, I will go ahead and kind of get started a little bit. I think it's good to understand kind of home occupation, it kind of seems, you know, it should be pretty easy to acknowledge. It's just some sort of occupation occurring within the residence by a member of that immediate family. In Brookings, we class, we have two classifications for home occupations, a major and a minor home occupation. And how do we distinguish between the two? Well, we give an applicant a checklist. And if they check yes on anything, it kicks them into a major home occupation. We also have some uses that are specifically listed within our zoning ordinance. The approval process for minor home occupation is we, if they go through, they fill it out, we talk to them a little bit, they sign everything, we issue them a ZERB, which is a zoning and use registration for rent. Major home occupation is a little bit more detailed. They do a similar questionnaire, they're a little bit different than the minor, but the big difference is, is a major home occupation, we do allow one individual outside of the residence to be employed in that occupation. The square footage is different. I think in a minor home occupation, you're limited to 500 square feet of one floor of the structure. Where in a major home occupation, it's 50% of the floor area. We do allow the storage of materials, not only within the principal building, but they can be in an accessory structure as well, which would be a detached garage, a shed, and whatnot. There are parking requirements for major home occupation. And in addition to what is required for a residential area, they have to provide two off-street parking spaces. There's some other criteria that are associated with it, but the way that approval process is for major home occupation is through a conditional use for minor or cup. I think what probably led to this discussion is recently, we've had some conditional uses that have had to come forward with it for the major home occupations. And we started to kind of question is, why are we putting our citizens through this process? In particular, for like a single hair chair, single-chair hair salon, somebody just want to cut hair out of their home. How would we ever know that that is occurring in their home? Typically, they're not really well-advertised, it's word of mouth. They get an established clientele and they're sticked pretty close to that clientele. And how would we know it's any different from somebody just coming over, visiting, socializing, having coffee or drink or whatever versus actually getting their hair cut, unless we're going to sit there for that duration and see that they come out with their locks a little shorter? So it, it was time for us to kind of look at this and reevaluate. And so, and feel free to interrupt and ask questions any time along the way. We're proposing to mix it up a little bit, occupations, and go more to an intensity-based type of system. That's kind of how we, when we updated our comprehensive plan, we went to land use intensity. We thought here might be a little bit more appropriate to go to an intensity-based. And we looked at three different categories, no-impact, minor, and major. I think another thing that's probably helped in our favor is, is think of a recent pandemic and how did the workforce change? Think of how technology has influenced how we work today. And so it maybe is appropriate to, to look at some of these. And so with a no-impact type of business, our initial thoughts was this would be supplemental to a business with the principal place legally established elsewhere in the community. It's completely computer/internet-based. There's really no change in the parking or traffic. You're not doing onsite sales. As I was sitting here, listening to the previous one and discussion we had earlier today, I'm not sure if the very first bullet point should be applicable, because I'm thinking of how many self-employed people that are doing a business that is strictly computer/internet-based, or I have a friend, they, they do voiceovers, they narrate books. They sit at their house, they read books, they record them. But that place of business isn't anywhere else, they're independent. So is, is that a major concern for the council? So is that a major concern for the council, is if it's self-employed? Or would you, I mean, they really have no impact on the neighborhood, on the structure itself. But if they don't have a place of business elsewhere in the community, then it would trigger it to move to a minor home occupation, which...
I think that there would be a lot of no-impact. I think people that consult at SDSU, you know, on the side, would get thrown in the hope of this, I would think. Authors who write books, I mean, they're no-impact, but you're saying they would be minor.
Because they don't have another, they don't have like a quote-unquote corporate business established in the community. So that may be one that we want to talk about. And I think as we proceed through, and you kind of see how the different classifications come, you might have different ideas of how we approach this, too.
Are these people even requesting any kind of permit if they're just doing it? Bonnie's writing books at her house.
I mean, that, I think that is a legitimate question. Like, is our current expectation that people who are doing like strictly online businesses or not even online? Like, are we expecting that they are doing minor home occupations?
I think the way it's written, the question is, are they violating potentially the current code?
Correct. And how do, yeah, and how do we ever know? I mean...
But would they, I mean, that is the question. Like, technically, would that be in violation then of our current code?
Yes. Because they did at least come get a minor home occupation and get a ZERB. But yeah, like artists and psychos. We don't have time to scour every potential resource out there to see if somebody's operating a business out of their home. But I like your train of thought, because I'm going to come back to that question after we get through some of this. So with a minor home occupation, these are...
Can I ask a question real quick? So is the current code how that first bullet point even got on that previous slide?
No, I think we were just going back to it.
Yeah.
No, I think...
You were thinking more remote workers.
Yeah, we were probably going down that line of remote working. Because we're thinking, it's like, what happened during COVID?
Yeah.
And then I got a number of individuals that they never went back to their place of employment. They were working from home. And it's like, technically, they would need a minor home occupation. And I think if we all look around, I mean, there's a lot of us that we could really do our jobs from home. And what impact does it really, does anybody even know that I'm working from home? And what impact does it have on the neighborhood, the structure itself? And so I really like where you guys are asking questions, and I want to make sure we circle back to that at the end.
As far as the term no-impact, I don't think that first bullet point gets at that theme that the other ones do. Because it really doesn't matter if you have that legally established corporation or business elsewhere. It's still having no impact on the neighborhood.
So, you know, we'll kind of let you read through the minors. There's a couple of things that we would, we would like to, you know, propose changing in this slide already, because we're kind of working through it today, is a lot of these are by appointments only. But we kind of discussed it earlier today, and we felt we needed to strike that, you know, not to exceed four visits per day. Are we going to actually enforce that or track that? Typically, with a lot of times with these minor home occupations, you might be thinking of like the hair salon, counseling services, maybe somebody that does massages. You really only have a client at a time anyways. It's by appointment. Are we going to require them to submit logs of their visitors for the day? And so we're thinking maybe to eliminate the four visits per day as well. I mean, these are just some suggestions that we've kind of thrown out there, is kind of working through the research and what we thought was appropriate. But anyways, you know, with the zoning and use registration permit, that is an administrative approval process. They fill out the checklist. If they answer the questions correctly, based upon the uses that are currently in the ordinance, then they can get a ZERB.
So on the traffic should not be abnormal to residential neighborhood. Is there like a, like a grace range? Because if you do have visitors, that is going to increase it, so that is already abnormal to residential neighborhood. So is there kind of like a range of what that looks like?
I think what we're really looking at there is, you know, I think in a typical residential neighborhood, there's the expectations that you're going to have people that come and visit. I think the concern is, is if you're having people come in every five to 10 minutes to stop and pick things up and get things or...
Deliveries.
I'd be careful with deliveries, because with Amazon, FedEx, UPS, they might as well set up a shop in my neighborhood. So, I mean, that's the way it used to be, is you thought that delivery is dropping products off. But now with the way that people shop, they're, those companies are through those neighborhoods on a daily basis, so it's not really as delivery-based as it was maybe previously.
So Mike, I don't know if you recall, well, you probably weren't here when Ed Fuller, Ed Fuller had a picture framing business in his home. Older gentleman retired from state, or state employment. And I'm looking at this one part, it says, "No onsite sales of merchandise or onsite training." But my wife actually went to have him do, you know, some projects that she did, that he would frame in math. Where's that slice of, you know, sales of merchandise? Because he's actually performing the service, but he's also providing product, too. Obviously, he's not in business anymore, but...
It's, it's a really, it's a really gray area, because the reality of it, Mayor, is it's very, it's going to be very difficult for us to be able to enforce a lot of this.
No different than somebody having a hair salon, too. They might sell shampoo and conditioner, that kind of thing also. So, I mean, there's going to be a little bit of detachment to services they may provide.
When you get into the major, it's contained within the principal building or the accessory building. You still try to prevent any sort of outdoor storage of materials. It's limited to 50% of your gross floor area. You'd actually be surprised as we actually have one home occupation that it's actually a machining business. They set it up in one of their spare bedrooms or something. It's on a smaller scale, but they are actually able to do some machining in there. It's kind of a little niche thing that they found, that they can do some certain parts. Once again, you're allowed to have one person outside of the residence employed. It's limited signage, there's parking requirements, there's limited retail sales. No more than one major home occupation would be allowed within a dwelling unit. And then it's approved through the conditional use process. So with our conditional use process, it's presented to the planning commission for a recommendation that's then brought forward to the city council, and then council has ultimate approval. One of the things with the major home occupation is, is, you know, there's a clause in there that does not include any of the prohibited activities, which these are some of the prohibited activities. The primary use of the property cannot be as a business. It's a residential area, it's residential purposes. Business is an accessory to the primary use. Really limiting any sort of display or exterior storage that would indicate that there's a business going on there. It really needs to be all enclosed within either the accessory or the principal structure. Really limiting the exterior alterations, so that it would be obvious to someone new to the neighborhood that there's a business operating there because of the exterior appearance of the home. And then preventing the toxic, explosive, viable, combustible, corrosive types of materials. We also get into things, you know, it's looking at those offensive odors, noise, things to the neighbors. Typically, when you get into these types of things, types of businesses that come up, there's a lot of times it's things related to woodworking, cabinetry shops. It's noisy, it's dusty, potentially some vibration. You also get into potentially when they're doing the finishing, you get some smells. But we've also had taxidermists that have done it, too. And really, what you notice there is usually if there's some sort of dressing or hide or something that is outside, most of the work is done inside. But they see, we've had lots of complaints where they see it being hauled in, and they see the finished product hauled out, and they just complain about it, so. The other thing is limiting the hours, so that they're really, you know, between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. You can't really do home occupations during that time period. We put together kind of a table, so you can kind of look up and down, and just look at the no-impact, minor, major, and then the prohibited, sort of prohibited uses, you know, you can't do it in any of the districts. But as you kind of look down on the left side, you can see some of the requirements, and then what they imply in the no-impact, minor, or major. But I think one of the things that we were kind of wondering, and I'd like, you know, to see if this is, if we're heading down the right road, if this isn't the path that you wanted to go down. But one of the questions that made me have is, how much interest do you have in really regulating no-impacted minor home occupations? Or is the emphasis more on the major home occupations? And I think the other thing that is different from what we've maybe been used to with our current zoning is we don't list out specific, or we're not proposing to list out specific types of uses. It's more based upon the intensity. And if it's, you know, determined to be a lower intensity, not a significant impact in the neighborhood, then it would fall into that no-impact or minor, where it's maybe those more intensive uses based upon the type of business, materials utilized, the frequency, the amount of traffic or storage that would, even the amount of space that it would take up is, that would trigger moving into a major home occupation.
So say a person rents from somebody, and they run a business, would they have, would there be like a landlord consent? I would think.
That's the way we do it right now. So the owner of the property has to sign off. If it's a rental situation, then the person that's applying for it can be the applicant, but we need consent from the owner.
I guess I don't, I'm sorry, I guess I don't see the reason to have a no-impact permit. I think it just sucks up staff time. We've probably had quite a bit of no-impact situations already in town that people don't even know about.
So a no-impact would basically be allowed by rights? So it's, would you know permit that would be written for it? It's just if somebody's interested in doing a home occupation, kind of start the interactions and communication back and forth with the checklist, and it's, yeah, you're no-impact. Just go ahead and do it.
Right.
Don't worry about it.
I, I think that adding no-impact as one of the options is probably necessary, especially if right now, the businesses that would be considered no-impact under this matrix are currently considered minor, that seems a little bit absurd, right? Like, if somebody is just working remotely, or if somebody is, you know, writing books or, you know, painting and not selling any of it onsite, it would seem, it would seem silly to have the city have an administrative process in that. And so if that's our current expectation, because of the way the minor situation is identified, I think we should adjust that and move to a no-impact where there would not be a permit process. I'm curious to know where in this matrix, something like, like some of your, what are they called? The MLM, right? Where like people, if you like become a Mary Kay distributor, and like those kinds of things. Where would that land in this?
Which is interesting, because I think doing the research, they kind of allude to the fact that some of those are kind of almost going by the wayside. It's funny, because it was all the names that we grew up knowing, you know, Tupperware and...
Avon.
Yeah, Avon and that was Mary Kay, probably is one of them.
You know, depending on how much of the house, but it probably fall into a minor, because how much of the selling are they actually doing onsite?
Well, and that was a follow-up question I was going to ask, is like, when we talk about onsite sales, are we talking that that is the point of sale, where somebody walks in with their credit card and pays for it there? Or if somebody purchases it online and then goes to the residence to pick up the item, is that then considered onsite sales?
It's a very gray area, I guess.
Like, what about people who make things and sell it on Facebook Marketplace?
Right.
Or something like that? Like, my gut reaction is we should be trying to regulate what people would typically think is a home occupation that needs to be regulated, and trying to not make people wonder, if I, you know, sell something on Facebook Marketplace, am I no-impact? If I work from home, am I no-impact? That would be like my gut reaction to this.
So some of these regulations were kind of, I think, crafted at a time where they were trying to prevent the never-ending yard sale. There's actually, we have regulations, you can only have two garage sales a year. But I think what you'd find is some people that maybe do the crafts or something, make some, you know, furniture or different things like that, they would put them out, display them in their yard, and offer them for sale. And it was just never-ending, and I think neighbors, you know, were getting a little bit concerned. So I think if there's an opportunity, it's maybe, you know, if there are onsite sales, but there's really no display, exterior display of items for sale, to try and keep it out of the yard. So that might be a way to adjust some of it.
I think maintaining the minor makes sense, because I think there are times when it's maybe not a major home occupation, but it would still be something that we would want to kind of have documentation that, yes, this business is existing in here. But again, I would say also implementing a no-impact category makes a lot of sense to me. I think where we probably still just need to do a little bit of work is in answering some of these like gray area questions is, you know, what would this be classified as if this? And obviously, you're never going to be able to identify all the questions and have all the answers. That's not at all the expectation. But I think there's probably some gray area that would probably happen frequent enough that we might want to be prepared with some answers for it. I also think what would be worthwhile is maybe thinking about what the state regulates, too, and like what paperwork individuals are already having to file, like with the state. Because like, if you're a contractor and you provide some sort of consulting services, there's state regulations around some of that, too. And so, again, I think that's a good argument as to why we should implement a no-impact, because the state's already sort of regulating some of that stuff. And there's, in my opinion, not a need to, to regulate that at the city level as well.
Mike, after your, what was staff's recommendation?
We were kind of just proposing the no-impact, the minor, and the major. We were proposing to eliminate specifically listing out the uses, and more creating kind of the criteria that is, you know, this is consistent with the, with the major home occupation, like the intensity, I think. So we haven't actually, well, we kind of have put it into ordinance format, but we needed to present it to make sure that we're maybe going in the right direction. It hasn't been to the planning commission or even to DRT yet. You know, it's more our internal staff kind of doing some research, looking at, you know, what are some trends or best practices on how they're adjusting home occupations in general. And then we wanted to present it to council, and kind of get your feedback to see if we're heading in the right direction.
I am curious, one of the slides mentioned that there would not be allowed items such as like combustible materials. I think maybe the one right before this, combustible, corrosive, radioactive, flammable, explosive. Recently, we've seen a couple of major home occupations do... Recently, we've seen a couple of major home, uh, occupations doing like gunsmithing. So I'm wondering, and I I think with those applicants, we had addressed the fact that they would not be having ammunition, it would be more the the firearm itself that they'd be working with. If an individual were to come forward with like a gunsmithing business, would this make it so that ammunition would not be allowable? Like, would that qualify as one of the items because it is explosive and combustible?
I think you start looking at the quantities that are probably considered outside of what a normal household would have. So like, uh, when I look at some of those materials, we all have cleaning supplies that some of them may or may not be combustible. Um, but when you start buying it in quantities that that's not consistent with a typical household use. When you're buying 50 gallons of whatever cleaner it may be or something. And that was one home occupation that was denied, um, you know, several years ago is they wanted to run a cleaning business, uh, where they would have a van, they'd store all their cleaning materials, but they're buying in such quantities that if you had an incident, would that quantity be, quantities be of such a nature that if there's spills or were they toxic enough that it would cause significant damage or impact not only to the home, but into the neighbor, neighborhood properties as well? And I just didn't feel that that was appropriate and that you need to go get like a a business location. Uh, from a gunsmithing perspective, it depends on kind of the quantities of some of the the materials, you know, like, um, obviously if they're like cleaning and if they're buying some of the cleaning solutions, I I have, you know, how big, how large quantities are you going to buy them? A typical person that's cleaning a gun, depending on how many guns they have, it's probably a small little bottle of the oil and cleaning solution. But if you're doing several hundred of these, you might be looking at much bigger bottles as, you know, for economies of scale. And so those are some things that we'd have to take into consideration.
I think in addition to the amount, the other thing that should be taken into consideration is the purpose, right? I mean, there is, I can imagine that there are probably some individuals, uh, in our community and other communities that would identify themselves as preppers that probably have very large quantities of flammable or combustible items, right? Um, and and so I think the purpose for the item is also something to be considered. If personal use is the purpose, then that's one thing. But if business is the purpose for the use, that could be an added layer to it as well. Because I think when you start to talk about quantities, you know, that could make another gray area, right?
We, we did have an incident where somebody was running out of their home. Insect passed aside a business. They were getting semi deliveries with pallets. They were rolling them off the driveway on a rolling rack, uh, 55 gallon barrels. They were mixing it in the back of their, uh, tanks in their pickups that, you know, each day. And so, I mean, we, we did, um, had to do enforcement on that because that's not typical, those quantities in a residential area unless you get a severe but problem. But they were going off-site, doing all the work. They were just mixing the chemicals on the database. So those are the areas where you're, you get concerns.
You have any questions for Mike?
I like the grid. I mean, looking at that, you know, the difference between the first two, the no impact and the minor essentially is traffic of clients. I mean, that's what's defining the difference there. And it seems like minor to major is the additional employee and having possible sales onsite.
Yeah, and it does expand the amount of area that you could use, but yeah.
But I think that having something like this for minor one.
I really appreciate the, the cleaning up of the minor to no impact. I think that was very much needed.
So it sounds like Bailey did a lot of the research here.
Yeah.
So first of all, thank you Bailey for your work, um, on this. Uh, for those that don't know, Bailey's got a background in landscape design, right?
Landscape architect.
Landscape architect. Uh, so it's really about places for me when I, I, I think about the work she's doing. But can't get away without, uh, putting you on the spot here. What are some of the interesting things you found in your research when looking at this?
I definitely noticed that most of the communities that would, that did not have specific occupations listed out like we do. Um, so that was kind of a leading factor in kind of looking at more of an intensity and use-based. Um, some of the communities didn't even have it broken up this much. They just had one set of criteria for home occupations and then prohibited, um, criteria. So some were even more simple. Um, I kind of thought this was an easier transition from what we have maybe, so eliminating, eliminating those specific, um, occupations, but still having different categories. But that was the main thing I noticed, that they didn't list out specific ones. Um, a few of the bigger, I think Minneapolis listed out specific occupations to prohibit. They did have a few things that they explicitly prohibited, but otherwise no listing out of things, so.
Where off the top of your head with those?
Um, I think it was like auto repair, restaurants. They might have restricted some gun use related stuff, um, but the auto that came up definitely was a big one. That might have been at a couple different, uh, communities now that I think about it, a couple of them had prohibited listed ones, so. And restaurants was definitely something that they were restricting.
So do we have somewhat of a consensus that we're on the right track here? You proceed? Okay, thank you, Mike Bailey. Uh, all right, we'll move on to, uh, future topics. Does council have any things, future agenda that they would like to discuss? Our next meeting is next week, October 28th. Um, we've got a few items on consenting gyms, some surplus property. And then, uh, we're accepting a park and rec donation to Dakota Nature Park. Student Association report. Uh, we have three first readings, uh, budget ordinance for the 2026, application for a conditional use permit and a zoning change. Currently, we have no second readings. And then other business, we have, uh, luna flat for Northeast Hanson addition. Transferring city manager contingency funds to city departments. And then authorizing special assessments for lawn care and union contracts. Uh, HR department will present. And then we'll have progress report and, uh, that's pretty much it. Motion to adjourn? Those of you that say aye? Thank you very much.